Forward, okay. Indication margins please of your board.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening and for clearing weather and the opportunities to be out and enjoy your creation. Help us tonight at the meeting to focus on the issues that are before us. Help us, Heavenly Father, to take into account the needs of others. Help us, Heavenly Father, as we're looking towards the issues of the common rule. And as the Fountain Festival is soon going to be here, I pray that you would give safety to all those who have provided security and that you help us just have a wonderful event. And thank you, Heavenly Father, to all the council members who served and our police and our first responders. There have been many things in the region that have been going on, but Heavenly Father, you helped us get through these things. So, thank you for that. I pray this is Jesus.
Do you stay up for the last?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on, beauty please.
And Mr. Heberly.
Here.
Mr. Erickson.
Present.
Pastor Canyon.
Present.
Mr. Sinkovitz.
Present.
Mr. Sharp.
Here.
Over, sorry. Mr. Darius is absent.
All right, we're going to start the meeting off tonight with citizens' comments. And if you're busy, you have five minutes time left. Five minutes, five minutes please. Do you want me to say this?
We actually don't have a stopwatch. We don't have a...
I'll set mine. Okay, well, so, we have any citizen's comments, please. Just me or...
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessie Martin. I am not quite in the borough. I'm right outside, but I am speaking on half of the Newville Joint Veterans Council. I had some feedback as far as the Memorial Day Parade. I thought that this year's parade went super great. We had a lot of people here, but what we did not have was some support with our borough members. Because I was the face of the Joint Veterans Council this year, I was blasted on public opinion foreign pages, Facebook, The Valley Times, the Newville Community Page, as well as other people's personal pages, because there was political posts during the parade. That is the wrong day to have a political post from a borough member. We were there to honor our veterans. When we had our speeches, we went into the ties of our community back to World War I all the way to today, of how many veterans that served our community that perished. That's the day of what we were supposed to do. We were remembering them for the Memorial Day. It should not have been about political, whether it was in regards to Democrat or Republican, whichever one, it does not matter. There was also a lot of things in the Borough Newville Page on Facebook about when we do the Joint Veterans Council, whether it be the Memorial Day Parade, the Veterans Day Parade, or the Christmas Ceremony, that our guest speakers are either only Republicans or Democrats. I just want you guys to know, there is four people on the Joint Veterans Council. That's it. Four. We have no help. Nobody signs up. So, within those four people, we do whatever we can. We send out, or should I say, I send out 21 letters to the Cumberland County, to the Commissioners, to the State Representatives, and the Senators. I don't care if they're Republican or Democrat. It's whoever responds is who the guest speaker is. Now, however this year, opinion may be, Barbara Gline again was our guest speaker, as well as Kelly Neidinger. They chose to be here. I understand they are the face of that for what they represent as well. But when you have a Joint Veterans Council for anything that has to do with the veterans, it should not have any type of... I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I've never done speaking on here.
Doing good.
I just, I do want to say, let me back up here. I was extremely hurt. This is my third year of doing this, my first year of the parade, because last year's parade was canceled. I've never done speaking arrangements until I became part of the Joint Veterans Council, and I've done a lot of hard work on it. I was really hurt, as well as our community was hurt with that. It was a slap in the face to our community and to our veterans that were from here that had died because of political war. That's what all the wars were about, was political bull crap. So, I just wanted to say, if we could maybe part of our Newville Borough here not have any type of political appointness during those parades, during the veteran ceremonies. It's not about that, that day. It's about our veterans. It's not about your political guidelines, what you want to do, what you want to put on your yard. That's okay. I understand your opinion. That's fine. But that day is separate. We should not have put that in front of a parade, put it in front of our children who were marching in the bands, where they can see that and stopping a parade because you wanted to voice your opinion during a parade. I just found that very irresponsible, and I was very hurt by it. There's a lot of backlash on Facebook for me not being a veteran myself. I didn't understand that. Again, there's four people in the Joint Veterans Council. I'm not a veteran. That is my American duty, is to stand up and honor these veterans. Okay? I volunteer for this. I put in over 80 hours for the Memorial Day Parade alone, working a full-time job, and being a mother and being a wife, volunteering, just like you guys are. So, I just would like a little help on that, if it is something that can be done, not to have our members post political things on events. Thank you.
Thank you. I should take it up. Thank you.
I was going to use notes, but I don't need notes. I'm not quite sure how to follow that, because, no, that was really what I wanted to say as well. And thank you for your work. I mean, as a resident, man, what a beautiful day that was, and certainly a solemn day in Newville to honor our fallen and our Gold Star families that were there that day. There were Gold Star families in the audience on my front porch and saw that. And, you know, that's welcome to Newville. And there's a sign in, I'm guessing, your property, Sharp. And, you know, there's a time and a place for advocacy. I'll be the first to say that. That's not the day. I think you said that best. There's not a whole lot I could say better than that, other than, we can do better than that. And it was really disappointing to see that, no matter how you feel about Representative Gline. She is our representative, and there's a time and a place for that. Meet with her. She's more than happy to meet with you, whether you agree with her or not. I was on the school board. I disagree with her on many occasions on school board things. But I also agree with her, on that day, that is the day for a solemn time, to be able to represent Newville in the way that our soldiers deserve. I too am not a veteran, but I am a veteran's wife, and I am a longtime veteran family. And it really, it made me sick. And I was, you know, I could cry about that. That was really, it was sad to start, but I think you can do better than that. So, I would advocate for some type of a, whether we do it as a policy, or whether you do it as some type of provision in our regulations that would talk about having, you know, during times like that, the political signs need to come down. You can say that. You can put those in there, where you can put them up for a period of time, take them down for so many hours, just in reverence to our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else stand for that? Thank you. Okay, Bob, what do you wish update on Fountain Festival?
Okay, we're in our final stages now. You're here.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm here. I was like, do you want to... You can say this.
Trust me, I know.
Oh, come on. Okay, yes, we are in our final stages, and I want to say, we are the same as you. The Fountain Festival is four people right now. It's four people. So, we feel you. We completely feel you. Okay, yes, final stages. So, for the fire police, we are in contact with somebody finally. Finally, we got somebody to call us back. So, Newville is in contact with us, and we are working with them. So, I suspect that is who's going to be our fire police.
And for the parade.
For the parade and for Saturday. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep. We wanted to know if the police, if the Newville Police, if anybody, if they wanted to participate in leading the parade, just behind the color guard, if they wanted to do that, and then also if they wanted to be around at all, like, to be doing anything just... It's Newville, so we want them represented as well. We don't want to say, you, you know, we have people hired for that, so we didn't know if that was something.
It's my understanding that the mayor has asked for the police, an officer, to be available on Friday night for the parade and for Saturday during the festival itself.
Okay. Okay.
But obviously, we don't release any hours, wouldn't there be here or anything like that, their hours, or which one? But they have, he has, they have been requested by the mayor.
Okay.
So, I will certainly expect that to happen.
Okay. All right. Should we reach out to them to see if they would want to lead the parade, just behind the color guard, or...
I'll reach out.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So, I was also asked to, and I think the mayor had said about this, tables in the old Borough Building for the art and for the...
We're going to have that ready. We're vacuuming it out. We moved all the stuff.
Okay.
We'll have a clean bathroom, I hope, and, you know, then you just set up, you know, for whatever stuff that you have.
Okay.
As long as we have tables there, I don't, you know, I have to honestly say is that, you know, I haven't been looking at our table collection over there.
Okay. That's why we have our table collection. I know we have...
We may have it in jail cells.
Okay, we can do that.
What show the art in the jail cells?
Can we put people in there?
But, yeah, we'll have, we'll make sure that there's tables there.
Okay.
Just, you just get back to me.
Okay.
I didn't know if you're using easels, if, you know, chairs, you know...
Um, we don't have any easels. Pretty much, we don't know what is coming in, because the art teacher for Big Spring is, there's, there's no categories or anything, so it's just, they display their art. So, we don't know what's coming in, to be able to say. And then our baked goods will be in there just for heat, so that they don't melt. And we do thank you so much for the use of the Borough Building. That is fantastic for us. I also want to check on the stage, that the stage will be there Friday night.
Yes, we have a stage, and the plan that I heard about has a stage on the north side of the street, sort of close to Mr. Barrett's, and they're going to mark...
Yes, I believe so.
...the location for that, and they're going to run the electricity from their property.
From him. Mm-hmm. Yes, yes, he did say about that. And then we were also told about some water tubs and the trash cans that the Borough has. A maintenance person, I don't know who.
I don't know what are water tubs. I'm sorry.
Okay, like, I think of them as water tr- sorry, the farm girl in me thinks of them as the water troughs for horses that you, we use, we use big plastic water tubs that we put ice in, and then we put the drinks and everything in.
Bob, the borough used to have big wooden troughs.
Okay.
Maybe that's what they're talking about.
That's what you said, we used to.
Okay. I don't know. This was just a maintenance person who had talked to Meg Ensland and said that there were water, or, sorry, there were drink tubs, so, okay.
And you said they exist?
I don't know how new, or how recent this person was, so I don't know if it was a... No, those tubs, those tubs were Meg's.
Oh, those were...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, we used, we used, we used water tubs. Yeah, those were Meg's. And then the trash cans, if they will be out. And we wanted to double-check that the police will be putting up the no parking and the road closures.
Yeah, we have that done by public works, and we also have your license.
Just, okay. Oh, yes.
I made 200 of them.
Okay, okay. I can take, if you have those handy, I can take those to somebody tonight, and she can do those. Thank you.
Think you get it all done?
Think get it all done? Oh, my goodness. Maybe if we don't sleep. This is, this has been, yeah, this has been crazy, so, but we have four very strong individuals who are very determined, and we will get this done. And then we could use some help next year. We would love...
You did good last year.
Well, I was not involved last year. We actually only have one person that was involved last year. So, yeah, thank you so much. So, yeah, we have three of us that are completely brand-new and don't know what we're doing.
How many vendors do you know that do that?
Um, I think we're at 60 or 70. Now, that's my total spreadsheet, so I think it was like between 60 and 70. Yeah, 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 so fingers crossed. And then I just have one more question. We were wanting to double-check, there was some problem with Glebe last year, but we wanted to double-check that Glebe will be a one-way, like, at the Borough Building, the old Borough Building, sorry, towards Shippensburg, towards the end of Glebe.
Yes, we, that's the information that just came out to you. I received it yesterday from Mr. Barrett. We're asking for Glebe Avenue to be one-way from West Street down to Heller Street for the period of the Fountain Festival.
Okay.
And so, we just need a motion on that.
Okay. I believe that is all I have. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
We do have your emergency operations plan also. It's a draft. It's almost finished. You have just a little bit of language, a couple of typos.
Can I just share a thought with yours? I've been here 30-some years. Volunteers have always been in the issue, always, Sharp.
They, they are, and I'm president of Chambersburg Saddle Club as well, so, and I've been president there for over 10 years, I think. I don't know. I've quit counting. I keep trying to get fired, and they don't fire me. But it's the same thing. We don't get, we don't get volunteers. We have, my husband says he gets voluntold when he has to do something, so I'm trying to not to voluntold him to do anything for Fountain Festival, but he might. And, yeah, it's the same, it's the same with anything you do. Yep, so, all right. Thank you.
We will need that motion closed. We have to make a complete argument to what way.
We're going to make the motion to go to Freedom Avenue for the Fountain Festival due February 1st and 20th, westbound from West Street to Heller Avenue.
Make it one-way here.
One-way here. Not... Second. Any discussion? All through. We have any other items, Bob, anything else?
Nothing from home business.
We're going to do business. Consideration of May 13, 2025. Anybody have discretion on that? Okay, item B, acknowledgment of acceptance of 2025, 2026 health insurance plan. We have...
We have needed a motion for the...
Oh, okay. Yes. So, move. Second. Any discussion? Acknowledgement or acceptance of 2025, 2026 health insurance plan. For Bob, there's no change?
There's no change. We actually came in, still, despite an 18% rate increase, we, because of how, you know, people came on and off the plan, we're still within the requirements of the Act 47 Plan. So, our recommendation is maintain existing coverage as presented.
And that, that, Bob, that, if I'm understanding these numbers correctly, there is an increase of cost, but it's offset by the non-employee contribution?
By the, yeah, by the uniform employee contribution, which we didn't have before, plus there's people who, you know, family members who came off the plan.
Right.
And it has been approved by PFM.
Any discussion? Need a motion on it, please? Yeah, I have a motion. So, move. Second. Approved. Okay, consideration of purchase of Borough Building camera system and DVR and TV body cameras. Be a grant, and be $4,000.
Yeah, we, back in September, the Borough submitted a local share grant application under the county plan, you know, I guess it's called category four, for a grant of $23,874. There were, one item was taken off, which was the Bullford Vest, because they are pretty much custom-fitted, and the grants do not allow for, like, personal equipment. So, it's reduced down to $20,588. The county, or the state did approve that earlier this year, and we finally got our paperwork from them. What we're looking at doing is making a purchase of three body cameras. These are about, already, our existing equipment's about 10 years old, and they're not functioning properly. That's something that we want to have functioning properly, if anything, just for liability purposes. So, that's $3,500, $3,555. We had originally budgeted for what's called a wireless video signal bridge. We paid for that last in January, because we'd moved it, but the signal coming down to the Borough Building was getting interfered with because of the trucks, the angles of the trucks, so we had, so we had to get that done sooner rather than later. Unfortunately, the grant does not allow us to pay for retroactive purchases. So, that's money on the table, but the purchase is not there. We have a multi-channel DVR recorder. As the board knows, we have cameras all over the Borough, very essential for our activities, because they're down at the park. We find the people who climb on the roofs and damage the equipment, but they also are at the intersections here along Main Street and High Street. We're looking at DVR, a new DVR on that, that's 28748. We also had approved, council had approved, a security cameras for the Borough Building itself, and, you know, that would be inside and also exterior, and that came out to $11,358. So, we have, you know, we have available, we're proposing to spend $50,217.92. That leaves us with a little bit of extra money. What we're, what we're going to be exploring with DCD is the possibility of reallocating that money to actually some replacement cameras out at the intersections here. Our cameras are 10 years old. They've been outside for 10 years. Their, their quality is not as good as we need to have. But right now, we're looking at authorization to spend $15,217.92. What, this grant is a reimbursement grant. We pay for it upfront, we apply for the reimbursement, so it nets out as zero. This is, was, it has been approved by our folks over at PFM, and they say that we have sufficient cash flow in order to handle the expenditure and...
So, how much is the grant for?
$1,588.64, and we have an expense of $15,217.92, which leaves us a balance of $5,370.72.
Got it.
Which we would like, we will be asking DCD to allow us to reallocate to other public safety.
Okay.
So, Bob, this is upfront money you can get. What's our plans to do then?
We'll purchase the stuff, you know, and then we already have the forms available. DCD will help us, and, you know, so it will be a net zero out of our budget. But it's a temporary crop in our cash balance.
Sounds great. Need a motion for that?
How many cameras here are you planning to buy for, what is it, 11?
I can answer that for you. It will be, okay, meeting room door, okay. Okay, exterior would be at the meeting room door, parking, it will cover the parking area, entrance, so it would be right there. Another one would be at the main entrance there, and that'll cover the side, the side and exit doors, I guess it'll be in that corner, side and exit doors, the road and the pavilion. We have a, one wide-angle parking overview, which will cover the parking lot itself. Then we have one in the interior lobby, which will be, you know, over by Jody's office, the council room here, and then the hallway right at the corner, which will allow viewing interior from to the emergency exit, and then down to the hallway. Yes. So, there would be three, five, five total at Borough Office.
Five total, 411. Is that what it was?
Yes, it'll, yeah, that's correct.
Can we just list up?
We had, actually, we had several consultants, vendors come in and asked them to give us a walkthrough, and where would we be putting security cameras to have the best coverage for the building, and both of them came up with exactly the same locations.
Three body cameras.
Oh, no, no.
That's my next question.
Oh, body, okay, yes.
Two cops.
A spare one. They get dropped, they get banged around, and so this is a spare one that, you know, we believe is useful. And we also, who knows, we may have a part-time officer in the future.
Or a dog.
Or a dog. No, I can have a dog. So, yeah, yeah, but that was, the intention is to have one spare one.
And again, that's included, I agree.
Yes. And it also includes the software, and I guess whatever other mounting devices that they need, you know, to transfer the data.
Any other questions on that? Okay, we need a motion on that? So, move. Second. Any discussion? Just want to point out, it's really nice that we get this now. It's another 20% discount. It's helpful.
Yep.
Any discussion? All approved? Aye. Okay, consideration requests to use meeting room for the Big Spring Senior Center at tax time.
We received a request through our website from the head of the Big Spring, Lisa Klein at the Big Spring Senior Center, asking us if we can, if they can use our meeting rooms here during tax time on Fridays to help people with doing their taxes. Now, currently, they do do it over at the senior center, but according to them, that basically means that they can't use that roof, you know, during the tax season every Friday. And so, you know, they asked us if we would do it, and there's no interference with our normal activity. Fridays tend to be fairly quiet here at the Borough Building in terms of visitors and meetings. So, you know, there would be no charge to this, you know, and so we bring it over to council for approval.
Yeah, they do a lot of work on the free. Okay, we need a motion on that, please? Motion. Second. Any discussion? All approved? Aye. All approved. Okay, consideration for payment of 2016, 2020, non-uniform pension fund balance.
As part of the Act 47 Plan, the Borough has been working on reducing our unpaid balance for both the police pension fund as well as the employee pension fund. The smaller ones, when the employee pension fund. And so, that has been split between the Borough itself, the unpaid balance between the Borough itself and the authority, because they're both under the same plan. We received a figure from our consulting actuary, which is Doug Worley, who's with the National Association of Boroughs Municipal Retirement Trust, and we've been working our way through making these payments. The final balance is $35,889.92 through the end of the month. And so, every month, it does go up a little bit more, because these are, you know, unpaid balances going back to 2016. Now, we did check with PFM, and again, we have sufficient funding, funds, but also, we budgeted for this. And so... And so that makes a, a nice difference. Now, what's nice about this is because we, with it being paid off, we can start, um, working towards release of funds held by the Auditor General's office because we were not meeting our municipal retirement contributions going back. And so that, you know, we're looking at basically having a domino effect through the system. Our next target will be the, uh, police pension fund, uh, which will be a little bit more challenging, but we're hoping that with the release of the state funds, some of that money can be allocated towards the, um, the police pension fund itself. So we're requesting, you know, the authority had already made their payment at last month. So we're requesting that council authorize a payment of the thirty-five eight eighty-nine ninety-two for the final amount of our employee pension fund, and that knocks it off of our Act forty-seven, uh, project list.
Well, let me put you aside, can you play, what kind of funds will get back since this is paid off?
Well, we have, oh gosh.
I don't know what, that's okay.
It is, we have multiple years under the Act forty-seven plan, and if you give me about thirty seconds here, um... How much did we get this year with that thirty-five? Yeah. I think, you know, okay, we get, well, okay, this year we budgeted ninety-nine thousand dollars coming into the borough. Um, and I think it's pretty much about thirty-five, thirty thousand dollars for each year that we have tied up, and I think we have that three years tied up. But that's also split between both the, um, uniform and non-uniform parents. So it's a substantial fund, uh, amount, and I can, in a few moments, I can get you how much mon, well, we started, as a matter of fact, we started Act forty-seven or beginning of last year owing between the two funds six hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, and we have paid off about two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand of that. So we've made, you know, so we've made a substantial, um, progress in taking care of the pension obligation. And again, our people, both PFM as well as the state are working with the attorney, auditor general's office to get the, um, funds released. And they're positive, they're, they're very supportive of us, but they want to see everything paid off before they start releasing money.
So just for clarity, so we're getting that back, we go to the, or requirements to put the pension fund?
We're, we're gonna, we will be back into compliance.
Okay.
Which is nice. And so that was a very expensive error.
Yeah. Okay, so need a motion on that?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Consideration of reimbursement of Highway eighty, do Highway eighty.
We talked about this at the last council meeting. The borough had previously spent restricted funds for, for activities that were not permissible. And of course, that was a repeated pattern. So, for example, we bought a, um, a truck for the public works, not for the public works, but for the sewer authority, which is not a permissible use. We paid for, uh, health insurance for the borough. We paid for electricity for the borough and sewer plant. We paid for all types of different things that were not permissible. Uh, we had a road project that, uh, got us for twenty-three thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars because we didn't, we split out the labor from the materials and we put them out separately, which is, uh, not permissible under, uh, PennDOT rules. We, um, health insurance, uh, we, we, um, paid for security cameras, we, ooh, what else do I got here? Engineering work, which is, which was for a project that was a CD BG fund, you know, project, I think that was community development block grant. I can't remember the exact street, but you can't use PennDOT funds for community development block grant funds. Yeah. And we, now, the authorities did make a payment last year towards the ranger in order to bring us into compliance with some rules dealing with, um, how we report our money to PennDOT. So they paid already out, uh, ten thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. Uh, but our, our full amount that was due through the audit was a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and forty-nine cents. We've made payments down on that, and so it knocks the total down to eighty-eight thousand two hundred nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Borough shares fifty-three thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. The water system, eighteen thousand four eighty-nine ninety-one. Sewer is fifteen thousand eight, not, nine eighty-nine ninety-one. And the streetlight fund, because we spent money on, that we were not supposed to, on streetlights, because we had a streetlight fund, three hundred dollars. So this has to be reimbursed in order for us to continue to receive our thirty-five or forty thousand dollars a year from the high, uh, the federal or the state liquid fuels fund. Now, honestly, that's actually the fund that we have the most money on outside of the general fund. We'll have over two hundred thousand dollars by the end of this year, which we can now start doing additional, um, road and sidewalk, road and curb and stormwater work as necessary. I think the next year would be a good year to do a little bit of crack sealing over on the, um, west side of town where I've seen the, I think the Parson Street needs some crack sealing. And also some areas along the intersections which show some deterioration. So, but we have, in order to do that, we need to, um, you know, settle things up. By the way, we budgeted, I think, fifty-one thousand dollars for reimbursement as part of this year's budget. So we knew it was coming, we just didn't know the exact amount. And this, um, audit report was provided to members of council and it is on our website. So we want to be, make sure that everyone knows, you know, our responsibilities here.
Hey, we need a motion, please. Some of them. Any discussion? All approved?
Aye.
So approved. Okay, discussion of ordinance codification proposal, General Code developers.
Again, as part of Act forty-seven, uh, the borough is obligated to seek quotes for the funding of, or the cost of codifying ordinances. Currently, we have about that wide of notebooks with our ordinances in it. Now, they are somewhat broken out, um, up until, what's it, probably the two thousand ten, two thousand fifteen, but by categories. But they don't really, but they're individual ordinances. And so sometimes we have to go back to four or five different ordinances to make sure that provisions were not overwritten. The, uh, the state provided us with a grant for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, um, to go towards ordinance codification. There's two, um, companies that do a lot of work here in Pennsylvania. The one that I strongly recommend and, and the least expensive, it's actually a company called General Code, that most of the municipalities around here actually use them, and they are on the state Co-Stars program, uh, so that we would not have to bid it out, e- even if it wasn't a professional service. What codification does is it takes your old ordinances, put them into categories, administration, taxation, um, streets, uh, police, pension funds. And then it basically brings them all together and updates them so that the most current information is available to them. Undoubtedly, there are parts of your ordinances that are still active that are really, every ordinance, you know, every municipality that does their first codification has those. Why? Because we're going back to the eighteen hundreds for ordinances. And I don't think that, you know, provisions for ordinances that apply to who is allowed to have a, buy a, a lot in the borough would necessarily apply. Uh, so what, I use that as an example, but I've seen that in other municipalities. What it does is it brings everything together, brings it current, allows, you know, you to have the most current information at your fingertips. Why it's important is because it saves a lot of time and money, because time is money here. Also, it keeps you from getting sued. You know, I don't know how many municipalities, you know, have been sued because they've had, given them wrong information because they didn't have codified ordinances or were not given the most current ordinances, and they end up getting caught. Uh, it's important to have this information codified. You know, once you get it done, you, you know, do it every three to five years, just to bring in your new ordinances. You're not adding a lot of ordinances. Uh, so you may have to, you may be able to wait, you know, five years.
This is also the, yeah, duplications.
Duplications, yes. It picks out a lot of different information. If you go onto any other municipality's website, go to Carlot, and you'll see, uh, an E-code there, you know, where you can look up anything. You can look up dogs. We had a question about, you know, cats the other month. And so we had to look through about that much worth of ordinances to find something going back to, was it nineteen seventy, no, nineteen eighty-nine or, you know, and we're one of the rare municipalities to actually do regulate cats in one form or another. Uh, and so this would have it right near at your fingertips, rather than having to dig through this. And so, you know, it's very, it, as I'd call it, it's an essential tool to local government to have codified ordinances.
And this is a grant?
It's a grant, it's a reimbursement grant. It's gonna take about two years, honestly. You know, there's a lot of editing that has to go on. Then, once we have the rough draft, it comes both to the solicitor, myself and council with the question, okay, do you really mean this, or do you still have this street? Um, does this still apply? And that happens no matter how old or new the municipality is. I've seen, again, I've seen that with townships that haven't codified in five or ten years. And, but they're, because there are changes in state law, there's case law, federal law, and that all affects your codif, your ordinances. And it is a reimbursement one, but it will, you know, it's full amount, but will, you know, it'll take about two years.
How much do they charge?
Sixteen five.
Oh, okay, so we got, we asked for the amount that they charged?
And we got the full amount.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty Baker came in and did what? Who, Baker?
Who's Baker?
Baker is a company that rewrote our codes and ordinances.
Oh, they did subdivision, I think zoning and subdivision, and they may have done the, um, stormwater. Yeah, and we, and the, the, since twenty-one, I think we've had two amendments to the zoning ordinances, which is the one that I'm most familiar with.
They didn't do plain ordinances either?
No, no.
Uh, I know you like this General Code publishers, but did you follow up with Baker and say what they would charge?
They, they don't do general, they don't do codification. They do, they do, specifically, they do, um, zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, uh, they do stormwater, and I think they do the ordinances dealing with, um, what's it, traffic impact, if I recall correctly. Um, and they also will do, for example, if the borough were in, if the borough had its own sewer system and water system, typically, they would also write those, um, ordinances, you know, codify those ordinances. But they're pretty much specifically on your, um, hard engineering rather than on things like parking restrictions. You have a lot of parking restrictions here in the borough, hoops and small sedans, uh, you know, they deal with codification of pension fund information. Um, you also, taxation, which is not, you know, doesn't change that much. There's parking recreation rules.
There's studies of two thirty-three, um, and then if the traffic patterns, if you get mutations, like.
But they don't, Baker really doesn't do general codification. And the other firm, and I wish I could remember, um, the name of it, you know, but they will do codification, they do codification, but their prices were much more expensive. Um, and I've seen their work in, I'm kind of underwhelmed. I think General Code just does a better job.
Anybody have a question on that? Need a motion?
Some of them.
Second. Any discussion? All approved?
Aye.
All approved. Well, do you have anything for other agents?
Um, just that, yeah, the last council meeting, you know, board directed that we grab a booth over at the founding festival and, you know, get engaged in public's interest in, um, home rule, as well as, you know, to answer general questions. And, you know, we're happy to do that, I'll be there. Troy Tyser will be there also, be volunteered to come out and answer questions about home rule. One of the things which was pretty, was, we thought was appropriate, because, you know, neither of us are, we represent the borough itself. We represent, you know, whether it's the state, where I represent council, but you've got a better ear than I do. And so what we've decided is, and I think I mentioned this, is that we have room at the, um, canopy for members of council. And I've got a sign-up sheet, but by, you know, putting your name on it and pick a time, and we will have a chair for you and we'll have soft drinks and, you know.
And we promised the chairs on a double.
I would sell that money, bro.
That's one way to raise some money.
Yeah. So if you could sign up, sign it up and pass that along. And I guess one last thing is that when we talk about sign up, last council meeting, um, we had a discussion about the, uh, committee assignments. And so if you, could each of you send, you know, two, two requests for committee assignments? And then that'll be turned over to the chairman and he will, um, make those committee recommendations. But if you could do that, I'd appreciate that.
Do you send it to you or to?
Send it to me, yeah. And then, and then we can get this, you know, moving ahead so we can take a look and see, you know, about the new committee structure. We've been talking about it since March, and I think that we've probably been moving ahead.
So we should each choose two?
Two, yeah, two committees, okay. And then we can, you know, start, you know, realigning the agenda and putting, you know, again, tying more authority back to the council members who are responsible for community development, public safety, public works, um, economic development, community development, recreation, those different things.
Anything else, Tom? Anybody else there?
I have a question. Um, obviously Fred was recently in the news. So I was wondering if Marcus could give us an update on, like, where that stands? I mean, obviously you read the paper, but if you were there firsthand, to kind of give us an idea of where we're at at this point.
Uh, he pled guilty to two misdemeanors, um, the, basically a double benefit fact that he, his appropriate funds, meaning, wouldn't be the wrong places, costs a lot of money by, by doing that. Uh, but he also, um, he falls information to council across the board. He's pled guilty to both, uh, which means that he may lose his pension, which is one of our goals.
Does that come to us?
No, but.
It goes in, yeah. It goes, it, yeah, yeah, what, we have an actuary study, and that has to be done on a regular basis by law. And so, um, the actuary has been paying attention to that because it had, um, been an issue. There'll be, they will be adjusting their analysis to accommodate the fact that he will be losing his pension. Now, uh, and I'll assume that, you know, there's documentation that'll have to be provided, but that'll be incorporated to how much everyone, um, our financial status for our pension fund.
There may be some miscellaneous expenses that you give reimbursed as cost as part of the whole process. And he's gonna get a fine, um, to the cost of prosecution. And I'm not sure how much that is, because there's a lot of the time spent looking at records.
Any jail or probation or what?
He's gonna get probation.
Okay.
That's because he has a clean record.
Okay.
His previous employment was never, when wrong things happen with handling money, the trench had been in. His previous employment was never, when wrong things happen with handling money, the trend had been in the past, you get rid of them. And tell them, never do it again.
Right.
Uh, because it's kind of embarrassing for municipalities to have to do that. But this was so, and, and because there's no evidence to use the money for yourself, um, my goal at the, I know who the judge is who's gonna be sentencing him, I want to make sure she understands that the scope of the money that's involved, and, um, all these pension funds, and we have records now, looking back and seeing that our experts were telling him, Fred, you've got to give the money from the state to the pension fund within thirty days. And he wasn't doing it, and so they go back and try and correct it, and they corrected it, and then he started doing it again.
But then it was the same thing with our Highway aid fund.
Right. Now, is there anything, because he's now pled, is there anything in any of his, uh, insurance policies that we have with him? Like any bonds or anything that we could file to try to recover something?
Well, we'll get some of those things, we have, our lawyer already on staff from insurance companies, um, because he's, he, he filed a lawsuit saying he fired me improperly. Well, with the, like, with his, uh, admissions as to what he did, that should go away.
Okay. But I mean, like, are we gonna be able to get, is, is there any insurance claims that we could file against a bond or something that he has?
We'll look into that.
Okay, well, what's the statute?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the bond would be properly.
What, what's the statute of limitations on that, like, as far as filing the claim?
Well, we'll check on that. You know, um, there's a good possibility, and, you know, I think we, you discussed this way back when I started here, is that he didn't, you know, his bondy was erratic at best. Or it could be that too, you know.
Yeah, I'm just looking at other ways that we could recover money, and it's, if there's a policy out there that we could file a claim with. And I don't know if there was any, like, any specifics that stated that he had to be, he had to plead to X, Y, Z, or for like, it had to be a criminal, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know if there was a restriction on the policy that said, okay, we will pay if he pleads X, Y, Z, but if he, if they, if he's sentenced and he pleads something else, it's not covered under the policy, that's what I was looking at.
I don't, you know, I don't know if we, you know, should be, talk about strategy at this point, having a public meeting, you know.
Right, no.
But, yeah, well.
But, but I'm just saying, like, that's just something that I think that we need to make sure that we're not overlooking, because that's.
I'm gonna be clawing back as much money as I physically can.
Appreciate it.
So the, it is, uh, July second?
First.
Oh, the sentencing?
The hearing, yeah, sentencing hearing.
We'll be there for that.
Is that then when we'll be able to have access to the forensic audit?
We are gonna be discussing that.
Okay.
Is anything else?
Sorry.
No, no.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session at this time, and Marcus?
Yes, the executive session, it's discussed there, it's gonna be confidential, and no action will be taken during that session. If there is action that needs to be taken, we will come out and.
He's going personally.